All right, November 16 to order. And good evening, council and panelists. And tonight we have a workshop on the Climate Action Plan. So I'm going to go ahead and just turn it over to Deb and take it from there.
Right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. And thank you for this opportunity to have our second Steering Committee meeting for the Climate Action Plan. With you tonight, we have members of the project team. And I'll let them introduce themselves individually. And then we'll turn it over to SSG, who is joining us via Zoom. But before we do that, I just want to quickly recap the objectives for this evening. We'll be learning about the engagement outputs. So what is the status of our public engagement efforts within the climate action planning process? The business as usual results will be shared and reviewed by SSG. That was one of the documents in the packet. And lastly, the target options that have been developed by SSG. They will go through each of those four options and provide the pros and cons. And of course, Steering Committee members will have opportunities to comment and ask questions on each of those items. So I'll turn it over to Kaylee.
Good evening. My name is Kaylee Barrios Lane. I'm the Energy Services Coordinator.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mary Rankin and the Sustainability Coordinator for the City of Ames.
Good evening. I'm Susan Guiaza, the Public Relations Officer for the City of Ames.
All right, I'll turn it over to Brittany with SSG.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us again this evening. My name is Brittany McLean. I am a Senior Consultant and Lead Analyst on this project with Sustainability Solutions Group. And like the council is aware, but for anybody watching who is not, we were hired by the City of Ames to help develop the Climate Action Plan. And we are a broker cooperative based out of Canada that has recently expanded into the United States. I'm going to let my colleague Eric introduce himself. And we'll also have Principal from SSG join us shortly as he hops from meeting to meeting.
Hey, everyone. I'm Eric Fernet. I'm the Lead Modeler for the Climate Action Plan. And it's nice to be here.
Great. And Yul just joined us there, so I'll have him introduce himself. Just don't tell him, Yul.
And I'm Yul Urban, Principal at SSG.
All right, great. If you'd like, we'll get right into it. I did just want to open this evening with saying, thank you for showing up tonight. Not that I doubted that you would, but it's certainly a time when lots of people are talking about climate change and talking about the climate emergency at the end of COP26. So this conversation is happening around the world right now. So I just wanted to say thank you. Local governments are very much on the front lines of this, showing up tonight and continuing through with this process. It's very much, you know, a good start in leadership. So thank you for that. Okay, let's get into our presentation here. I believe everybody can see my screen now. As Deb said, I'll just recap quickly. We tonight we're here for the Steering Committee members about engagement outputs today, the business as usual results and target options that we have developed for the City of Ames. And we're also here to consult Steering Committee members about their questions, comments and concerns today regarding the PAU results, engagement inputs and target options. I provide you with a quick reminder, as part of the project process, what we're looking to do this evening to share information, provide you with the opportunity to ask questions and provide feedback. We're going to share with you this evening how we would like to engage the meeting between this evening and the next Steering Committee meeting. And at the next Steering Committee meeting, we encourage a discussion, a selection on a target. We're not encouraging that tonight based on the project process that we've laid out in the engagement objectives. So our meeting agenda for this evening follows basically those pieces that I just laid out for you. We're going to do the engagement update and provide an opportunity for questions and answers. Business as usual results. Eric will present that piece, followed by an opportunity for questions and answers. And then the target setting, the opportunity for questions and answers. And then we'll talk about the next steps in that process. I will apologize in advance. You're going to hear me talk a lot tonight. There's a lot of information to go through here. And I know you've already been presented with a lot of information. So I will pause at many places during this presentation for your questions and comments. And just another quick reminder, before we begin, you'll see highlighted in yellow where we are in this project. So we are in the low carbon actions and target setting phase, more target setting than the low action development part. So this is really the third stage of our process. We began re-engagement and data collection to get the project kicked off. And then we developed that being business as usual scenario that you're going to hear more about tonight. So really, this is really the beginning of the stages of the process where there are decisions to be made. Previously, we were gathering information and compiling information to understand the baseline. But now we're getting into that decision-making process. With that, I will stop and ask if you have any questions so far before I move on to the engagement. Okay, carrying on, I will move on to the engagement update. So the summary today, we launched the interactive website through the city website. We've been providing information there for residents. And we also provided the opportunity for individuals to participate in a community visioning exercise. And I will talk more about that and the results of it here in a moment. We also had our first meeting with the Supplemental Input Committee. We talked to them about the process. We presented initial PAU results to them. And we did a visioning exercise with that to understand what it was that their sectors were looking for out of this process. We also had our first town hall, as you know. And again, in that process, we shared information about the process, talked about the initial PAU results and asked attendees about their vision for the process. So really, just as a reminder, that was the project launch stage and the business as usual phase. So it really was an information sharing phase from SSG to those different groups that we spoke to. I'll dive in now to what we heard when we did our visioning exercises. This combined the feedback that we heard from the Supplemental Input Committee, participants in the town hall and then individuals that participated in the visioning exercise online. We did all of this through an online interactive engagement we'll call Mentimeter. We posed a number of questions and asked people to provide short answers. So we started off just asking people what Ames is a great place to live because we wanted to understand what people care about in Ames and what they like about like the city. So we heard some great answers around sense of community that was overwhelmingly present in most of the answers. Parks and nature, services being offered in Ames, safety, the feeling of safety, and then ISU and education. We asked if there were any environmental initiatives in Ames that participants felt have been really successful, trying to understand what are the successes that we can build on here, what has worked in Ames in the past. And what we heard is renewables projects, both wind energy and solar. People love those projects. Transit, so syride seems to operate well for people. Parks, trees and nature, focus on those. And we heard some responses around specific parks. Waste diversion, people spoke about that in different ways, but that definitely came through. And then we did have some answers come up somewhat frequently saying that not enough has been done for the environment in Ames. When we asked, are there other problem-solving examples in Ames that have been really effective? So again, we wanted to find out what are some processes that people felt have gone well in large city processes and changes. And when we asked this question, interestingly, we heard more about environmental and energy emissions-related initiatives and some that we hadn't even heard in the environment question. So again, we heard renewables, EV infrastructure, transit. We heard about food at first and we heard about the parks, in particular Miracle Park and Aiden. And just so you're aware, as we're going through these, the images represent, I just chose one image from the grandness of this activity three times. So three word clouds were generated, one for the town hall, one for the supplemental input committee and one for the online. I've looked at all of them together and bring, thought through and done an analysis to see what popped up the most individually and collectively. And so these answers are collectively, but you're only seeing one image here. We also asked, are there climate action examples in other jurisdictions that you find inspirational? So people, a lot of people stuck close to home and talked about Iowa City and Des Moines. We also heard, we had a lot of answers pertaining to Illinois, Boulder, Colorado and Europe. And that gives us a good sense of where people are looking for inspiration. We also asked, considering opportunities to transition to a low-carbon future, what gives Ames an advantage in tackling this issue? So again, trying to understand some of the community context and what people see as assets in their community. Expertise in education overwhelmingly was the answer. Community involvement and people wanting to be engaged in the process came up a lot. Students and young people being excited about the process came up a lot as well. The availability of clean energy and then ISU as an institution. When we asked people if there were no constraints, what is the first thing you would want to see happen in Ames to tackle the issues of climate change? We heard that people would increase renewables over transportation emissions, increase waste diversion, get to net zero by 2030 and improve city design and zoning to allow for some of the changes to happen. We asked what people's desired outcomes as a planner. We heard 100% clean energy. We heard net zero by 2030. And we heard implementation. People want to make sure this isn't just a planning process, that it's implemented. And we also asked people what they want their community to look like when this is done. And overwhelmingly, we heard sustainable, green and equitable. We also, aside from asking our own questions, the community member reached out to us from EcoTheater because they were hosting some climate action Twitter sessions around the city at the same time you're doing this. And they asked how they can align. And so they also started posing questions during their performances and putting up signs during their performances and asking people to participate and post it notes to their questions. And they were willing to share that information with us. They also helped drive people to that website to participate in the visioning exercise. So the main question that they focused on is how do you envision an Ames that has strong climate action? And I've just provided a picture here. I'm seeing, I haven't had an opportunity, this is just one table. I just received this feedback. There's a number of pictures I've received from this group with all kinds of feedback. So we will go through that and do a better job of analyzing it and sharing it the next time. But there's a lot of answers just off the bat. It's information sharing, recycling, access to active transportations. We saw a lot of those answers through that process. To sum it up here, to move us along to what we see happening next with engagement, we will be releasing a survey tomorrow morning on the target setting process that people can have input there. And we will ask, wonder a question about the target and then also some questions around what people want to see in the target, what they value. We're going to have another meeting with the Supplemental Input Committee to get their thoughts on the target options. We've also put together for them an outreach support toolkit to help them reach back out to their sectors. So we've given them some general guidance and advice. And we've given them specific questions for this phase of the project that we would like to see them ask their sectors and report back on during the next Supplemental Input Committee. So we're sure that we're hearing the voice, not just of the individual in the room, but the sector that they represent. So that will be launched tomorrow this fall by then at the time between then and December 1st to gather that feedback and bring it to the next meeting. And also, of course, we're doing ongoing websites. These people will have access to the public documents and where to find all the information and recordings from the website tonight. And of course, this moves us from the information sharing phase of the public into the consulting and involving phase with the public, where we're asking their opinions to provide that back to so that you can understand where the public sits with this information and for you to consider that as you move towards selecting a target. So we will bring the information from all of these engagement pieces back to you again on December 21st. Okay, can I answer any questions about engagement at this point? Or does anyone have any comments?
Questions?
Brittany, when did you say the Supplemental Input Committee was going to be coming back to you with the input that they received?
So we're meeting with them on December 1st. And so we will be asking them for the input then. And what we've done is we've put together a Google form for them to share some of the information back with us by that date. And then also we're asking them to bring that through into their input during the workshop.
Did anybody on the committee express concerns that the ISU students are going to be going on fall break for all of next week and may not be as accessible as they might otherwise be?
We did plan the Supplemental Input Committee around that, hoping that we can provide enough time. And then also what we're doing is leaving the community survey open until December 1st so that there's time before they go and then time after they get back.
Great, thank you.
So Brittany, how do we think about the community engagement in terms of being representative of the community? How do we think about that?
Yeah, that's a great question. For this visioning exercise in particular, it really is a way to kick off the project and get people involved and to hear those initial insights and to help us start to understand the context. This is not a statistically significant type of public engagement. We understand from this, you know, what we've collected represents the views of the people we heard from, which altogether is around 150, 160 people. And so obviously, that's a very small portion of the. The other thing that we didn't do with this really broad exercise is collect demographic. You will see us do that in future engagements, in particular in the survey that you see coming up tomorrow. That still doesn't mean it's statistically relevant. So what really matters is our distribution technique. And so we've been in conversation with the city project team about ways to do outreach online and in person. We've talked about a few ideas for how that can get out in the community. And we will be checking those demographics while it's open to try to understand if we're getting a good cross-section of the community.
So obviously, the reason why my question is important is that the results that you showed are going to be the result of the people who had the initiative to come to the meeting or offer input. And so it's quite possible in a university community where there's a substantial number of people who are interested in climate matters, that that group would show up and communicate their concern. But I don't know how to think about how much weight should be placed on the results that you've provided us from that engagement without some sense of the degree to which it was representative of the community?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I think that's a great point, especially for that, hopefully, we did not ask demographic information. It shows you, you know, a sample of what those 150 or 160 people think. It doesn't show you what the whole community at large thinks. And so we need to do more work and we need to do more outreach to dig in during these next steps as we get into the decision-making processes. I think with this topic in particular, but probably I'm sure across many of the topics that the city deals with and the decisions it makes, you often get the people who are the most interested, either very supportive or very unsupportive of a decision that is being made at the city level. And so it's our job to do the best job we can to do that outreach. And in these decision-making phases, capture the demographics, but also be very, very honest about, you know, who we did get and how much representation we got.
Thank you.
And how do you sort through to make sure that you don't have duplicate responses too? I know that from the town hall, there are people that were on the Supplemental Input Committee, which I greatly appreciate the fact that they also came, you know, to the meeting. It wasn't all of them, but the point is, is that if we're really trying to, to Tim's point, really trying to get a broad cross-section of representation, is there a way that you're trying to filter to make sure that they're all unique responses? Or is it just more or less those that showed up for each individual event?
Yeah, great question. So with the technology we use, Mentimeter, the one thing that we can do with that technology is to, and we did, we turned on the ability, we flipped the switch basically so that there could only be one response from one device. So in theory, somebody couldn't go on their phone three times and answer that, those questions again and again. But also, in theory, if somebody had access to multiple devices, they could go on and answer multiple times. So that's not something we can control.
And in your word, I call it a word salad, whatever you call it.
Cloud, it's cloud.
That's a better term. Cloud versus salad sounds kind of like organic, doesn't it? Sorry, anyway, go ahead. You said there was three unique ones for each group. And then help me understand, help us understand, did you kind of combine those all together? Or were they, you just picked the one that was most representative? Help us understand that.
Yeah. So what we did is, I went through and I did like a thematic analysis of each one of, for the responses from the community, from the Supplemental Input Committee and the town hall, to understand if there is a lot of difference between the three sets of responses. We really didn't find that there was. And so what you see tonight is the together. So when you see what people value about Ames, number one was a sense of community that's combining the results from all three engagements, but we do have that separately as well.
Thank you. Any questions?
Brittany, I want to follow up on Tim's question about the engagement. We're particularly interested in those possible unintended consequences of decisions we make for our low and moderate income families. And I'm wondering if the demographic information that's going to be collected is somehow going to indicate whether we're getting that underrepresented group? And what happens if we aren't getting them in the outreach? How do we capture that information that's so essential to making some wise decisions?
Yeah, that's a really great question. Thank you for that. So yes, it will be asked. And of course, we do always provide the option that people can choose not to disclose things like income. And, you know, we have, you know, I self-describe as, and we list a number of things that people may want to tell us about themselves that may indicate whether they're an equity secret group or not. They can always choose not to answer those questions. However, one of the benefits of asking this question is that we're able to check on those partway through. So we can check our distribution strategies. And I mean, with the project team weekly, and we can take a look and say, you know, we're really, you know, if we're only capturing, you know, a certain demographic in the community, we have more work to do to get it out there. And so Susan and I have talked in particular about making sure that there's paper copies, making sure that there is outreach in different places. You know, we've brought some ideas out there for now. I don't think we've landed on the exact locations, times and dates. But, you know, can there be somebody at the library in these different places where we might, we might find some different demographics that we're looking for? Understanding that you always, you know, you need to meet people where they're at. You can expect them to come to you always.
Thank you.
Anybody else? David?
It's clear that we value being able to reach more people over time. And it's also clear that you have that in mind. But what about continuity with the people who have already been reached? Simply because at this point, I think the questions that we're facing are very different than the questions that will come later. And it would be good to have people present through much of the process rather than just episodically.
Yeah, that's a great thought. And what we are encouraging people, the broader public, to do is to subscribe to get the updates through the website. Also, we have the schedule available so people can expect to know what the stages of the process are and when they can engage. We don't have as much control, of course, over whether the public chooses to re-engage over and over. That is some of the continuity that the supplemental input brings is having them go back out to their sectors over and over with targeted questions and then to bring that feedback back to us.
Thank you. And so it's an email address. If you have an email and want to get it that way, you can sign up for that. Is that like the main mechanism to register for continuing interest?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, let's go.
No more questions?
Nope.
On the engagement?
Not right now.
Okay, I will turn it over to Eric to bring us through our business as usual results summary.
Sure. So before we dive into the results, we'll just take a look at what a business as usual scenario is, how we defined it. So we've seen results from the model previously for our base year of 2018. The business as usual scenario looks at projections from 2018 to 2050 for Ames in terms of energy use and emissions and demographics and all the data that we put into the model. So business as usual scenario is our scenario that shows the most likely outcome for Ames if no serious climate action endeavors take place, right? So it's a conservative scenario where we're looking at, we've included only things that are planned or funded and to get our emissions baseline from 2018 to 2050. And we'll use that scenario to contrast with another scenario that we'll present next time, which is the low carbon results. So what, just back to the first slide, yeah, thanks. So the main ingredients that went into the business as usual scenario for Ames are demographic projections for population, employment and new buildings, changes in climate. So temperature projections for heating degree days and cooling degree days, changes in electricity emissions, so applying differences in electricity emissions factors. One of the biggest changes that we've included is for the ISU district energy system, which in 2024 is planning to replace the coal boilers with natural gas boilers, which has a big impact on emissions. For transportation, another big change is we've included the target of 50% of new cars being sold starting in 2030 will be electric vehicles, which aligns with the federal target. And we can go to the next slide please. And just a word on scenarios in general before we dive deeper into the results. It's not a perfect forecast. We're not looking to have this super precise forecast of what things will be like in Ames until 2050, because that's, it's not feasible to do, right? We don't know the exact future for Ames. But the usefulness for the business as usual scenarios to give us an idea of if we stay on the same path, if we don't go in the direction of serious climate change emissions mitigation, what does that baseline look like? And how does that contrast with our low carbon scenario that's forthcoming?
So could I ask a question before we go further into that? I've been mulling over just the term business as usual. And I want to offer just one perspective, and I'd be interested to see if council has any input or you folks have any input. We actually have been doing a lot with respect to climate, even in the eight years I've been on council. So to communicate that if we, if the business as usual is somehow demonstrates an apathy towards climate matters, that's really not true. We have been working hard with Mary Rankin to try to understand best practices of what communities around the country are doing. And we've really put a lot of effort into this. So if people are watching this and they think, well, business as usual means that the city of Ames is just apathetic towards these matters, that's completely misrepresenting the serious considered focus that we've been giving this matter for years. And I don't have an alternative term, but I just think it's important that if we use the term business as usual, frankly, we're going to be better off because we are reducing our carbon footprint year after year in the community. We're looking for innovative ways to improve our carbon footprint profile. So I just want, I'm curious if anyone else had that same question. If we're going to use this term, I just think that we have to understand there's some connotations and maybe even denotations that come along with that.
I would say, I mean, I see what you're saying, but I think I don't feel any defensiveness about the use of that term because we need to do more. So even though we have been doing quite a bit, and I'm proud of the changes we have made, in order to, yeah, help the planet from a whole lot of changes, we've got to do more. And so I don't, the term business as usual doesn't stir, you know, any feelings of defensiveness in me. I mean, I mean what you're, you know, I see what you mean, but.
I don't dispute that there are opportunities for us to improve. That's a different question. My point is that if we're going to describe accurately what our staff and our council has been committed to in the eight years I've been at council, I hardly would describe that as apathetic.
No, I don't think so either. I just think, you know, we are, this is one step in making a real concerted effort too. And we had in the past changed things for the better. And this whole climate action plan process is yet another one of those commitments to doing even better.
I think business as usual means something different for every city as well. And so Ames' business as usual is probably going to be better than other communities because we have been making that concerted effort. But it doesn't necessarily mean it's negative. It's just the business as usual starting point that we're looking at.
Well, and I would view business as usual as being a very good thing, but I'm not sure people who are watching this necessarily would attribute that. So I think I've made my point, but I just want to keep that in mind. I'm actually quite proud of the work that our city and staff have done on this so far.
Thank you, duly noted.
Thank you for saying that. And I want to, look, I apologize if business as usual does have a negative connotation to anyone. That's not what it's certainly meant to represent for us. It's meant to represent, you know, what's planned and what's in place. And they're very well alive. While I know there is some good things planned in Ames, and there usually is when we're working with different municipalities. What it's meant to represent is this is our starting point. So if we're creating the, if we're creating a plan to see where we can push even further, then it's a way of understanding what we're doing now, what results that bring. So then we can compare it to where additional action will bring the community to.
Okay.
Okay. So here we see the total emissions by sector. So the way to see, to read this graph is you have the years from 2018 to 2050 on the horizontal axis, and then the total emissions, and you'll tons of CO2 equivalent on the Y-axis. And you'll see that if we look at the general trend and we don't focus on each individual sector, but the general trend, we see these steep drops at the beginning, which I'll get to. And then an increase over time, which is mostly driven by a population increase in Ames. So the population is projected to increase by about 1% per year. So that's what's included in this business as usual scenario. And we see that despite this population increase with the things that are planned and what we've included in the scenario, we stay, we end up slightly above where we started. So we stay relatively constant. If you look at 2018 versus 2050, despite that 30% or 1% per year increasing population. So that's really the overall trend we're seeing. If you go sector by sector, if you start at the bottom, transportation, you'll see a slight decrease and then a very, very slight increase afterwards. And what's happening here, the main thing, is the EV vehicles, electric vehicles, starting to come in in 2030. So by 2030, 50% of new vehicle purchases, the assumption is that 50% of new vehicle purchases will be electric vehicles. So that creates a decrease in emissions, and we're replacing our gasoline with electricity. But since the electricity also has its emissions tied to it, that's why we see this staying relatively even. If you look at the second category, that's the district energy use at ISU. First of all, one key thing to notice is how significant of a portion that sector represents. So it's quite a bit of the emissions for Ames. And the second thing to notice is this big drop in 2024. And that's for the plan to switch out the coal boilers with natural gas boilers. And since natural gas produces less emissions than coal, that's why we see that significant drop there. For the remaining sectors, so commercial, residential, industrial and so on, or industrial municipal, the big drop at the beginning, I just speak here, is for electricity use. And the main difference, the electricity emissions factor. So that means that between 2018 and 2019, the sources used to produce the electricity that's used with the Ames emitted less emissions for energy unit than in 2019 versus 2018. And the main difference there, the main difference for that drop is for wind energy. So there's kind of a complex mechanism that are REX renewable energy certificates, which I don't want to get deeply into unless there's questions about this as a question period. But in 2018, the REX for wind energy was sold, and 2019, they were kept frames. And this essentially means that it keeps the benefits of the emissions reductions in 2019 versus 2018. So all I have to say that the big drop you see at the beginning here is due to electricity and it's due to not electricity being, you know, any different one. We can go to the next slide please, Brittany. And here we have total emissions, but instead of being by sector, we have it by fuel type. You'll notice the same story, the representative department for electricity here at the bottom, where we see that drop. And then the main thing to notice here is about coal use that was used for the ISU district energy system. We put up in 2024, and natural gas use increasing, which we're placed by. And finally, here we're switching from emissions and now looking at energy use by sector. And the main thing to notice in this one is the transportation sector you see on the bottom here. So we saw emissions for transportation were staying relatively stable with a slight decrease at the beginning and an increase afterwards. But here we see that the energy use actually decreases more significantly. And that's because of the efficiency gains from going from internal combustion engine to an electric vehicle. The electric vehicles engine is about, or the electric vehicle is about three to four times more efficient than the gasoline vehicle. So you see those gains here in energy efficiency. And any questions about the business as usual results?
I do have a question about the renewable energy credits. So I'm trying to understand how this works. The way I think of it, when we keep the renewable energy credits, that basically allows us to put the reductions on our own graph, and some other entity doesn't get to put them on their graph. So it avoids double counting of renewable energy. So, but this is a change I wasn't aware of in the electric utility here. That, so I'm gathering that in 2018, we made a policy change. I don't believe it came to council, but is this something that happened at the electric utility?
Eric, do you want to give a summary there?
No, we've got.
For Kaylee's answer.
Actually, we have our director, we have our director of electric services here, and he's going to share with us, give us some background.
Yeah, good evening. Donald Kahn, Director of Electric Services. So when we first started doing wind, we have some customers that are purchasing green energy. And so we use those renewable energy credits first to serve those customers. Beyond that, we did not have a direct need internally within the city. So we were able to provide those to other utilities. They then paid us some money, which we then took that money and then passed that back to our customers through the energy cost adjustment. As we were going through this process, we said, you know, now is the time as we're looking both at the greenhouse gas inventory and the climate action plan, that it makes more sense for us to keep them and then retire them as a part of our own inventory. So that was started in 2019.
Thanks.
Thank you, Don. Other questions?
I have a question. Can I, Mary, if I could ask you a question? You obviously had a chance to have input and review this material. Would you agree with the assessment? And I'm going to take the liberty of changing the name. I'm going to call it the baseline rather than business as usual. But the baseline, which I think is a more accurate term. Are you comfortable with the projections for greenhouse emissions by sector for the baseline? You think that's a fair assessment?
You mean, is it projects out? Well, I think, you know, and I think this is what Brittany and Eric were both alluding to is with the information that we know right now, I think that is comfortable assessing that out because we don't necessarily know what projects that we are going to put into place. We don't know what technologies that we may, you know, have the opportunity to invest in. So this is just looking at with what we know now. So for example, what we do know now is that Iowa State will retire the last two coal boilers. That has been, you know, reflected here. But other projects, we don't, and the assumption related to transportation and EV vehicles has been incorporated. But other than that, we don't know what projects we may put in. So this is fluid in a certain extent, but with what we know now, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question. I don't know whether this is a question for Don, who would then have to come up here again, or whether it's a question for somebody else. I noticed that the electricity supply for 2018 has MISO figured into the graph. And MISO in 2018 had a large portion of its energy produced via coal. And I'm wondering how much that might have changed already in the last three years since we are purchasing some energy still from MISO. And so I don't know how much that's changed. Kaylee, do you know?
Sure, yep. So the emissions factor, which would be kind of the best single metric to capture all of the portfolio that we're purchasing from MISO, would be, so it has been decreasing. The 2019, I know, was 0.5019 metric tons per megawatt hour. And the years before that were in the 0.56. Many years ago, it was up into 0.6 or 0.7. So it is steadily decreasing. I can get that exact information to show what the trend is over the past maybe five years, if that's kind of what you're looking for.
I don't know that I need that. I just wanted a sense of how much it had declined.
Yep, it is decreasing.
Other questions? Eric, I noticed you deleted a few slides from your presentation that were actually included in what was posted online. And I need some help understanding electricity supply emission factors. I think it's a slide that did follow after your total energy used by sector. It actually showed Ames as being, having the highest supply emission factor. However, under greenhouse gas inventory that was done, it actually showed that Ames was lower than buying electricity on the grid. And so help us understand why one is showing it being highest when actually the greenhouse gas inventory was showing it being low and actually was encouragement to continue doing that because it was much lower than buying it off the grid.
Yeah, that's a really good question. Oh, okay. There we go. Those are the hidden bonus slides. So here we see the 2018 emissions factors for the different suppliers of electricity. And so what we see here is the Ames municipal electricity system being the highest out of what's provided. And my question is that in the GHC inventory report by Pearl Blue Dot, there was mention of this being kind of inverse of what we're seeing here, where Ames would have been lower than the suppliers. So I've looked into that. In that report, in, I don't know if we can pull that up, but in figure 10, you'll see the same kind of, actually the exact same numbers you'll see here. But then there's a contradiction in, at the end of the report, in the technical report, where it mentions that the Ames emissions factor is actually lower than the other ones. I can't, I looked into it, but there's no. I can't, I looked into it, but there's no way of really knowing what that comment at the end, why they're saying that it's lower. And the other ones, the only thing I can think of is if you include REX in the equation for 2018. So if the REX were not sold in 2018 but checked, then AIMS would be lower. So the blue column here would be lower than the other ones. So maybe that's what that comment is referring to. But in regards to what we've included in the model that aligns with the data behind the greenhouse gas inventories, but they're both, they're both shown, or they're both consistent.
Well, I mean, consider this item open then because I think it's a big deal because if we're going to be basing a lot of major decisions and choosing scenarios, I think we need to have an accurate handle on this. And I personally think that council would like to make sure that we're relying on, you know, the accurate data before decisions are being made. But this is a big deal, in my opinion. It's actually inverse of what was shown. So I'm still not, I mean, I, this is above my pay grade, but just going through the two and just trying to get a, you know, a handle on it. I thought, wow, this is, this is actually contradictory, so.
I would add that I'll look into that comment as well and see if we can figure out exactly where that came from or if it was just a typo. But this, the data that's on the screen now also aligns with the data that we have in the electric department that we follow monthly.
So then it calls into question other things in the report then. See what I'm saying is that the whole reason that we did the greenhouse gas inventory was to go ahead and get accurate data to start with and everything's being built upon previous data. So if this data has a typo, is our other typos contained? See, all of a sudden, the whole house, cards falls down.
Sure. I do think that the data is correct and I wonder if the, just the comment, is that what you're saying, that the comment doesn't align with the data? We'll check into it.
So it's on page 23 of the technical. And if you all look into it and get back to us, that's fine. I don't want necessarily drill down into it.
I'd just like to point out that we, I think the whole thing has been set up so the data would be compatible from the greenhouse gas inventory into this. And so when Eric did the modeling, right, that's what the data actually says. And characterization of the data is, yeah, there might have been a mistake there and it's important to find it out. But still, I think the fact that it's, that we have the reliable data that we're using consistently is really valuable and helped bring this out, right?
Yep.
Help discover it.
Yeah, that's a good point. Bring me on, I'm sure if you could share the greenhouse gas inventory. I think maybe that will help clear it up. I sent it to you, page 22, figure 10.
I'm not sure that I can access that right now.
Okay, that's okay. Basically, that figure, figure 10 of the greenhouse gas inventory report shows the exact same numbers we're showing this graph. So I just wanted to show that and that there is inconsistency with the comment at the end. So we should slide that and clear that up.
Any other questions?
No, Brittany.
Okay, great. Okay, with that, we will start the conversation on the target setting overview. So I will just note here, you received a briefing on target setting. And I will go through these one by one and share the relevant information for each target. And I will provide an opportunity for questions and comments after each one. Just also flag for me if you do have a question throughout. There certainly is a lot of information here to go through. Okay, so I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna reiterate the process here quickly. So tonight we're presenting four options that we have developed. And here it says present the four options. There's a lot of different ways that you can set a target, but we've provided four options that we think are good options. We're here to hear your feedback. So we did that through the target setting briefing and then we're doing that through tonight's presentation. We're going to present the same options to the supplemental input committee through a briefing and through the workshop on December 1st. We'll also present those options to the public via the website, social media, press release, press release and their access to this presentation and then via a community survey. And then we'll be coming back here, of course, on December 21st to review that feedback that we, that we received from those other parties. So right now, what we've looked at is we've looked at four options. You've been given a briefing on those, as I mentioned. So these are kind of stacked here from least aggressive to most with evidence based to the side. So we have science-based target general aligned with federal target, which is not that dissimilar. Science-based fair share target and an evidence-based target. So I do want to just flag here, two of them say science-based, two of them don't. They're all bitted in science that comes from the IPCC, Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change and different interpretations of that. I will get into that in more detail, but these are, these are the names that are essentially used across the globe about these. I want to talk a little bit first about the 2050 target. So we're looking, we're looking at a plan that goes out to 2050. So across the world, what I would say is happening, we saw it at COP26, but we were seeing it before that. There's a lot of net zero by 2050 commitments. That's kind of the standard, the minimum standard that we're seeing all across the globe right now. So we would have, you know, the majority of wealthy nations have signed on to that target. And even nations in other parts of the world. And then we see many sub-national governments also signing on to 20, net zero by 2050 commitments. So they're also referenced in the 2018 Paris Agreement and in communications from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. So this is a pretty common feature that we see amongst targets. You see the conversation now and within the past few years, focusing more on the interim target. So what are, what is the pathway to get to net zero by 2050? That's the conversation that we, that we hear about. And that is also where I would say there's more divergent targets right now. So in that thread, not all targets are created equal. So what you can kind of see, so if, you know, we haven't set in AIMS, there hasn't been a 2050 target set and there's no interim target at this point. That's what we're here for. But you can see, if you imagine, let's just take that common example of net zero by 2050. There's a lot of different ways to get there and they have very different impacts from an emissions perspective. So on the left, you see the fewest emissions. So that would be taking a lot of aggressive action right away to minimize emissions and then kind of dealing with those last, kind of towards the last 10 years. Then you can see there's kind of this linear kind of trajectory. That's another way that, you know, we see a lot of 45% by 2030 targets. So that's a linear approach to that 2050 goal date. And then, you know, and obviously there's a whole bunch of different scenarios in between that. But then on the other extreme side, what we could see is, you know, a country or a government admitting to net zero by 2050, but choosing to, you know, admit, maybe have, you know, coal power and things like that out to 2045 and then try to, you know, take aggressive action within those last five years to hit that net zero goal. So that has a very different outcome. So those three scenarios have very different outcomes. And so I wanted to flag that. And I wanted to say like part of what we'll be working with you and with AIMS on is figuring out what is the right pathway for AIMS. So that's what this target, these target options are based around is finding, finding the right pathway for you to get to whatever your end goal is and what timeline that happens on. Different targets also have different outcomes from a social and economic perspective. So we get into some of that as we get into the targets. But as you can imagine, there's opportunities and challenges socially, economically to doing this really aggressively. And there's also some challenges to waiting to the last minute. Can you imagine the upheaval of trying to make this transformative change in three or five years, right? So I wanted to provide that overview for you. Any questions on that before I get into our first target?
Doesn't appear to be.
No questions?
No questions? Okay, great. Thanks. All right, so let's talk about the general science-based target. So when we look at this, where it comes from is the 2018 Paris Agreement based on a recommendation from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. So it was based on staying below 2 degrees Celsius and warming and ideally working towards 1.5 degrees in warming above pre-industrial levels. And so the interim target associated with that is a 45% reduction in emissions from 2005 levels by 2030 and net zero emissions by 2050. And so you may know right off the bat that some of these targets are based on a 2005 baseline. And so we would have to have a discussion depending on what target was chosen. You know, how we reconcile that with the 2018 baseline, AIMS has, how we want to deal with that. What I'll say about this target, it's, you see a lot of this target around, you know, around the world. It's kind of a, you know, it was the gold standard at one point. I would say now as we've moved on, I'll show you in a moment here. We've seen, we've seen some consistent missing of targets. And so that pushes us into a stronger direction where probably 45% may not be enough at this point. And so IPCC just put out a new six assessment report. So it's possible that they will update this number or quite likely they will update this number come February when they look into targets and where the world needs to be. To that end, I guess speaking about, you know, the targets that are in place right now, the world's not on track. And I believe we showed this slide at the last meeting. But just to reiterate, current policies would see some warming, warming between 2.7 and 3.1 degrees. If everybody followed the pledges and targets that are in place right now, we would still see 2.4 degrees. For being really optimistic about the net zero targets that are in place, we'd see 2 degrees. And so, so we're not, the world is not hitting that 2 degree, ideally 1.5 degrees with the pledges that are in place and with the action that's happening right now. So, you know, you can understand that in the way of, you know, the longer this problem is lost, the more the world needs to come together and act more aggressively. Some general benefits and challenges to this. So like I said, it's aligned with the Paris Agreement and IPCC recommendations, although we do expect an update soon. It's similar to targets in many other jurisdictions. So there's some, you know, there's some places to pull from. It does avoid some costly infrastructure logins. We talk about this at the local level a lot. We won't get into financials this evening, but one of the things that we know is, things like building retrofits are always a component of decreasing emissions because they represent such a large proportion of emissions in communities. And the longer that we keep building in a way that that doesn't minimize energy use and emissions, the longer, you know, we kind of deal with those down the road because we know that buildings are long-term assets. So there is a benefit there to avoid some of that and also to avoid some operational costs of buildings down the line because energy costs tend to increase. And so if you're using less energy, that's beneficial operationally. It does have the potential to realize coal benefits at the local levels. It's something that we always look at in our analysis as well as, you know, these plans don't just contribute to energy efficiency or emissions reductions. They should contribute to, you know, a cleaner, more connected community. Some of the challenges around this, so I'll get into this more when we talk about the fair share target. But this does not address global equity concerns. And when I opened the meeting, I mentioned that, you know, local governments are kind of on the front line of climate change. And one of the things that means is, you know, you're being asked to do what's best for your citizens and you're being asked to do what's best for the world. And that's a tall order, right? And so this doesn't address the fact that, I guess a better way to put it is that 45% by 2030 would have all parts of the world decreasing at the same rate. The more recent best practices say, hold on, is that really fair to expect maybe nations or sub-national governments that are still developing to, you know, halt development or to halt their, you know, their economic development or, you know, human safety priorities to address targets at the same rate as wealthy nations? So that's the global equity component. And again, it doesn't align with that most recent evidence for staying within 1.5 degrees Celsius. Regardless of this being, so this is the least aggressive target that we're presenting to you this evening. But even so, you know, there's, it's a transformative change. And so there's some challenging systems, level changes required. There's extensive behavior change, change management, ongoing political will. So the idea that this, this is a long-term planning process. So it isn't just the council that's sitting here this evening, but it's successive councils as well and then cooperation with higher orders of government. Some infrastructure login will occur with this plan, so it doesn't take care of all of it. And then upfront capital cost, which is, which is, you know, a feature of all of these as well as that. You know, we see payoff down the line, which is great, but there are some big upfront capital costs to all of these plans. Can I answer any questions on that target and target overview specifically?
Doesn't appear to be any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so now we're going to look aligned with the federal target. So this is a very similar target to the target that I just presented, the science-based, the general science-based target. So it, the federal government in the US has committed to a 52% reduction in emissions from 2005 levels by 2030 and then net zero emissions by 2050. So that was announced in April 2021, when the federal government really got, you know, reestablished its commitment to the Paris Agreement. And it's based on the United States nationally determined contribution in line with Article 4 of the Paris Agreement. So that is basically a nation decides for themselves what that target should be. And that piece is voluntary. So like I said, it's non-binding, it's self-imposed. It's, it is aligned with 2 degrees of warming, so it's around that same trajectory. And it's based on that baseline figure of 2005 levels. The other feature is of a nationally determined contribution. Just so you're aware, involves the federal government committing to adaptation considerations and then adjusting financial flows to align with reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So we'll talk about that a little bit in a moment here. Some of the commitments that were made when that, when that target was established in April is 100% carbon-free electricity by 2035, supporting energy efficiency upgrades and electrification of buildings. is one hundred percent carbon-free electricity by twenty thirty-five, supporting energy efficiency upgrades and electrification of buildings, reducing carbon pollution from the transportation sector, industry decarbonization and agriculture decarbonization and land management. So what the federal government has proposed is um, you know, some fairly ambitious actions to meet their commitment. Um, and so my understanding right now is there was just a one trillion dollar infrastructure bill passed and there's another one that, the one point six trillion that is, that they're trying to pass. And so my understanding is, is some of this, particularly the carbon-free electricity is in that uh first bill that passed. And most of the other pieces that address emissions reductions are in the second bill that have, that has not yet passed. Um, all of that to say, it's a very interesting time to, to be looking at this. Um, there's no, obviously, there's not a, a great amount of detail with this just coming into place about how um, how this might, you know, roll out, um, you know, what, uh, how money may be redirected to different levels of government or to communities um to make these things happen. Um, so we don't, we don't have those details at this time. Um, but um, what we do know is that, you know, I guess there's two pieces to this. There's the positive. If uh, if this happens, it certainly helps contribute, of course, um, to any local goal. Um, if the federal government um does come through with these, with these commitments and supports um the transition. Um, so that's, that's a positive. Um, the negative is, it's, you know, it's hard to, the one trillion was passed. It's hard to rely on um, you know, other, other levels of government. Um, you know, continuing through with um, with commitments, with, with changes. Right? So, so we know that um, what one government puts in place may not be carried through by another. Um, so that is, that is a risk to this. Um, also, the only other, the only other piece I would say about this is, you know, if this does roll out. Um, and some are, some or all of this is accomplished at the federal level. Um, you know, it has that good impact regardless of the target chosen. So this, right, it doesn't just happen if you choose a federally aligned, which is, which is comforting to some degree. Um, I just want to share this with you. This is just um, the um, uh, basically a snapshot of how um the, the federal government sees, sees emissions being reduced um from their perspective. And so you'll see a lot of, you see in these budgets, we'll do something similar when we get to the low-carbon scenario for aims in these wedges. Um, you see a lot of um emissions reductions in their clean uh electricity standard. Um, quite a bit in um industrial performance, quite a bit in green hydrogen. So these are the areas that they're really targeting um to try to decrease emissions. So the benefits of this, very similar to the, to the last one, because there's really, you know, there's a five to seven percent difference there. Um, so the, the benefits and challenges are not, not that different from the other ones. To sum it up, it's aligned with that, some of the work that was done in two thousand eighteen. Um, you know, a lot of, there's a lot of similar um targets floating out there right now. And there's the ability to realize some co-benefits, but of course, um, on the challenges side, it doesn't, it doesn't address global equity either. Um, it doesn't align with um, with one point five degrees, which is really um, you know, even in the Paris Agreement, it's two degrees, working towards one point five degrees. Um, but that being said, it's still, it's a, it's a big change. It's transformative and you're gonna deal with all of those, those change challenges. Any questions or comments on that one before I move on to our third?
Can you go back one slide, please? I'm sorry, one more. Can you help us understand what this graph is really saying? Yeah, I understand. I understand all the, but.
I'm gonna give it my best go and then I'm gonna turn it over to our modeler if I don't do as good of a job as what he would. Um, so he produces these, so you see at the beginning, so um, basically, they've created along the top, the dotted line, so that is their business as usual. You'll see that represented down at the bottom. So they understand that a federal level, if no additional um climate policies or planning is done, um, that emissions will stay about the same uh across the nation as what they were in two thousand eighteen. And so what uh, what they have done and, and what we would do at a localized level here is look at, okay, what are the actions, you know, what are the sources of the emissions, which is what we've established um, uh through the business as usual for baseline report. And uh, and we, once we understand where it's coming from, we understand what some of the options might be to address that. And so um, so what these wedges, we would call them, show are, are the impact of taking different actions. So if you go, you know, from the top, you have, you know, agricultural uh greenhouse gas reductions. It's a really small piece and as you work down, you can see kind of the chunk um that each of these actions takes out of emissions. Um, some of them you'll notice, so we have this purple one here, low-carbon fuel standards. Um, you know, it starts earlier on and then that kind of phases out somehow. You'll notice that the clean electricity standard is not having a lot of impact at the beginning, but then towards uh twenty fifty, it has a much larger impact. So that's um how they're rolling that program out. What you see below um, the, the colorful wedges are what we often call the uh, the emissions or carbon liability gap. So um, you know, what, what emissions are, are still occurring. So you'll see in two thousand eighteen, um, all of them, you know, are still occurring from, from their baseline, from their starting point. If you look at twenty thirty, it looks like they're not quite halfway there. Um, and if you look at twenty fifty, it looks like, you know, there's a small gap between net zero and uh, and uh where these actions that they've planned out take them to. And so we sometimes see this as well, um, when we work with uh at the local level, that at the end of the day, despite our best efforts um to, to provide um uh, a target or to meet a target, um, you know, it may not be, there may be a small gap because it's not realistic um to get right to zero or to know what can bring us right to zero at this time. And so sometimes there's still that gap that, you know, hopefully over time through adaptive management, new technologies, new innovation, how that gap will get closed. Eric, did I do okay?
You did great, yeah. I'll just add that.
As long as it made sense to the people in the room.
Yeah, I guess that's the important thing. Um, oh, maybe I'll just add that we're gonna do a very similar thing for aims for the low carbon. And this top line that you see here will be the same as the, the business as usual that we've just seen previously on the other sides. And then the bottom of the graph will be the low-carbon scenario and then you'll see for aims, each action that we choose to meet this target that we're coming up with um in different colors here. So I think that'll be really interesting when we get there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, next option, please.
Okay, so let's move on to the science-based target with uh carbon budget and equity considerations, also known as the fair share approach. Uh, so this is the most aggressive option uh that we've suggested. So this is um, represents an eighty-three percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions um by twenty thirty. Sorry, it says from, but by twenty thirty and net zero emissions by twenty fifty. So it's in line with um, the current best practices for um, for reducing to the one point five degree um level that um would uh, would avoid, you know, the largest impacts of climate change, but also providing that equity uh consideration that I spoke about ear- earlier. So on the global level, um, you know, wealthier nations and their sub-national governments taking responsibility uh to decrease emissions based on, you know, historical legacy, um, the ability of, of less wealthy nations to, to pay and to have the resources to make this change at this time. Um, and so that's in line with the Science-Based Targets Network. We talked about that. You will talk about that a little bit the first time we were here. It's um, a whole bunch of um, organizations, scientists, uh, leading uh, or, sorry, cities that represent um large portions of the world's population and GDP. So they're all parts of this uh Science-Based Targets Network or the C forty's climate leadership uh team. And so the equity really comes down to, like I said, the responsibilities, so historical legacy of, you know, who were the emitters um capacity, so the ability to um, to make the changes compared to less wealthy nations and then intergenerational justice. So this just um kind of sums it up here in a, in a graph. So what we would see is, is over time, you know, instead of seeing this straight linear, everybody does the same thing that we see in the forty-five percent by twenty thirty, we see um high-emitting uh high GDP cities decreasing at a faster rate than low-emitting, low GDP cities. Um, and so what that gets us to is, is most, uh, what we base this on is, you know, most cities in North America getting to two point uh nine tons per capita uh by twenty thirty. I'll just talk about the carbon budget a little bit more. It's, it's um, it, it can be a little bit complex. I, I won't say that the, the concept is, it's, there's so many different ways to, that uh, our uh people calculate this. And so the fair share is, is one approach that's most commonly used and like I said, endorsed by uh the C forty cities. But the carbon budget is essentially the maximum amount of greenhouse gases that can be emitted worldwide without increasing the global average temperature more than one point five degrees Celsius above pre-industrial levels. That's a mouthful, so I will break that down for you. So it basically, what scientists have figured out, you know, we're already at one point one degree of warming as a globe over um, over pre-industrial levels. So we have point four degrees um left before we kind of back out at where we know um we can avoid kind of the most catastrophic impacts of climate change. So they've done some calculations based on historical knowledge and their knowledge of future climate change um projections and feedback, uh positive feedback loops, cycles and, and all that complexity to say, okay, so for that point four degrees that we have left, stay within, um, what are the amount, what's the amount of emissions that we can, we can emit globally? And so, sorry, my uh, my slide disappeared here, but it's uh, it's uh, it was around uh six hundred gigatons in uh twenty twelve when they started doing this. And now we're down to about two hundred and ninety-six as a globe. There we go. There it is. So pre-industrial, sorry, it was, so I, we're pre-industrial here, it was twenty-five hundred and then we've slowly kind of lost that over time. So we can do a calculation um for if, for the fair share budget um and basically use, you know, the science and information um that C forty is using to say under that scenario, what would be uh, what would be uh Ames' budget? So if we look at that two point nine uh tons per capita, it turns out to ninety-nine hundred kilotons of CO2 equivalents um left. So essentially what we can do from that is to turn that into a budget um and kind of allocate that over time until you run out of that budget. So there's also a formula for it decreasing year over year. And again, at the top here, what you see is what we presented to you this evening, businesses planned or baseline. And then we see this is kind of the steep curve here that we would see with the staying within the one point five um degrees of warming using the fair share approach. And again, this just highlights, this isn't a, this doesn't represent aims. This is just an example of what we would put together. We would put this together for any scenario. But uh, this one in particular is a um, a science-based uh fair share approach example where we see that steep decline within the first ten years or so of the plan. And then, you know, we're working at getting rid of those final emissions uh right around twenty fifty. And so uh, these are, these are the, the opportunities or the actions that, that get you here. So it's, it's a combination of, of a whole bunch of different actions that brings a city towards, towards these targets. And as I mentioned before, some of them starting early on and some of them kind of ramping up or starting at a later date. Uh, so the benefits of, of the carbon budget and equity approach or the fair share approach is it's aligned with the Paris Agreement and the IPCC recommendations. And it really gets to the more stringent end of those. It aligns with the Science-Based Target Network and, and really what's being touted as the best practice globally. It avoids costly infrastructure login for the most part because actions start so rapidly. Uh, and because they start so rapidly, it does maximize the co-benefits as well. Um, so decreasing things like any air pollution. Um, of course, this one has, has the highest upfront capital costs and just like all the others. Um, you know, there's, there's challenging, there's those transformation changes that are gonna be challenging everything. That's, you know, it's huge systems level changes, behavior change, all that. Um, I think um, I've listed here, you know, there may be resistance um to uh, due to the, the quick pace and the transformative change, that's a lot of change for people to take in. Um, there's a huge education component um with the community undertaking a goal this aggressive and that's, that's such an important component of it. Um, I, you know, it's worth highlighting that any of these um, any of these targets, you know, you can expect um challenges for different reasons and different perspectives within the community, of course, of too aggressive, not, not aggressive enough. Yeah. Okay, any questions on that one before I move on to our, our final evidence-based?
Brittany, just to clarify, the eighty-three percent reduction that's shown on slide forty-five is from twenty eighteen or from two thousand and five?
From twenty eighteen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I have a couple of questions about this. When we see numbers like eighty-three percent, should we, I mean, are we really capable of being anywhere near that accurate? Should we be thinking about like eighty percent to ninety percent? Is that the idea? Or, I mean, I don't wanna be misled by what seem like really precise targets that, that, that are really all up in the air.
Yeah, that's a great question. So it does, you know, where it's per capita, it really does look at those population projections. Um, uh, maybe you will weigh in here, but we've kind of seen, you know, some kind of standardization of people saying, you know, if I'm eighty to eighty-five percent, um, that's where I wanna be and, and um, consider it science-based. So um, you all, I don't know if you have more to add to that or not.
Um, I don't think so. I guess the one thing to really think about with all these targets is we're talking emissions reductions and not energy reductions. So energy may actually, consumption may actually increase while we're hitting these G H G emissions reductions targets. So they look, they look really steep, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we're, we're actually reducing energy at the same time. So I think, I think that's important. Sometimes it, it gets confusing when you're looking at these rapid drop-offs of emissions. So you're like, how, how could you actually achieve this? But um, it's really just about changing the type of energy you're using and also how you're using energy rather than um, um, making massive sacrifices, which it kind of can imply.
But in fairness, that presumes that there is a constant supply of renewable electricity. And there's clearly a huge deficit in the amount of electricity that, that can be provided. I mean, I'm, I'm gonna look to our dot com at some point, but uh, if all of us, if all the, these cities move towards obtaining their electricity through solar and wind, there wouldn't be enough. And so it, it would have to go towards reducing the, the level of energy um consumption.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, reduction in efficiency is, is certainly a key part of the pathways and some of that comes along for the ride with, for example, heat pumps or electric vehicles, which are more efficient than the current technology. with, for example, heat pumps or electric vehicles, which are more efficient than the current technologies that we use. And some of them may come along with retrofits, which are incremental activities. But certainly there's going to need to be more renewables and and certainly there will need to be storage. Because like you said, renewables are not always available.
This this
All of that is a very complicated mix. And I'm sure Bob can speak to that as well.
I'll have more questions later.
I I do have some more on this. If, can we look at the the slide with the carbon budget on it? Yes, that one. Good. So when I look at this, am I understanding this correctly, that the proposal of this alternative, the carbon budget with equity, is to attempt to maintain the the green line decrease?
Maintain, sorry, I didn't catch the last piece.
Is it, is the intent to attempt to decrease along with the green line in this graph?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so a couple of follow-up questions. First, there is a bump in twenty twenty eight. So I'm wondering, is there, are you taking something into account that you expect to happen that would cause a shift there, twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine?
So I have not put in any actions to this. So what all I've put in is basically what I've plugged into the the into this calculation is the population projections for Ames that we received from the cities. So any bump would have to do with the changes in population.
Actually, I can I can explain that, Brittany, even more. That that bump is because this methodology is based on a C40 methodology. And there's a convergence point at twenty thirty where everyone tries to get two point nine tons per person. And then afterwards, it drops off towards zero. So that's a function of the formula, essentially.
I I see. So the formula is asking everyone to adopt a more aggressive stance at that time?
Yeah, yeah. And that's both rich countries and poor countries.
Okay.
This this paradigm is set up.
Thank you. And then another thing I noticed on this slide is that it it looks like the the the, we basically go to net zero around, you know, somewhere between twenty thirty six or twenty thirty eight, you know, as far as I can see on this graph here. And so we we have there, a lot of people have been communicating with council and have been specifically asking for a twenty thirty net zero target. Is there, is there some way, I mean, it kind of seems when I look at this, that this is pretty close to a twenty thirty net zero target. There are many different ways to get there, of course, but this seems like one that comes close. Do, is that an okay way to think about this?
Yeah, it it does come quite close and and the, you can barely see it there on the bottom and or maybe you can't. There's a bit of a green line and there's there's a bit of emissions to take care of post twenty thirty and post twenty thirty six. But it gets pretty close. I mean, if you're looking at an eighty three percent reduction by twenty thirty, you've got another seventeen percent to go. And you see a lot of that kind of beating out by twenty thirty five, twenty thirty six in this scenario.
Good. There's always a long tail on things like this. Thank you.
I have one other question, and this is just about terminology. Are business as planned and business as usual the same thing? Because I see BAP on here.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that that's an error on my part, but oh, yeah, that's a, that's like an academic debate. Yeah. So business as usual, I guess, you know, in a sense, what we've what we've done here for Ames is is a business as planned for all intents and purposes, because we have looked at what's planned at the university, we have looked at the plan for the electric vehicles. And it's really, you know, it's, again, it comes down to the semantics and the terminology. A true business as usual, you might say, represents, you know, no further actions from what's happening today. But what we've put into this model are actions that that we're pretty sure are going to happen. Like I said, like the the changeover at ISU.
So can you go to the slide that you have two two slides forward? So help help council and the community understand some of these challenges. Upfront capital costs, what are you, what are you talking about in terms of order of magnitude? Talking about, you know, an eight-year period of time, extensive behavior change required. Can you walk through each one of those and give some ideas of what you're taught? I understand that you don't have a plan yet put together, but the point being is is that each of these have aspects of these that I think has to factor into the mix.
Great question. You'll, do you want to take the first attempt at that? Because you have you have significant more experience working through these scenarios.
Sure. So if you, if you think of a scenario where you're trying to eliminate a lot of the emissions, say by twenty forty, you're going to need to change over the entire vehicle fleet. And right now, I think just just going sector by sector, it's predicted that electric vehicles will reach cost parity by twenty forty or twenty three, sorry, twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six. So there's an incremental capital cost for electric vehicles up till that period, I'd say five thousand or six thousand dollars per vehicle, which is declining. So you more or less have to replace the vehicle fleet turns over every ten years. So there's probably, I don't know, twenty or thirty thousand vehicles in Ames. So you can multiply twenty thousand, there's probably going to be, I don't know, five, five million dollars or something on on the incremental vehicle costs as a capital cost in that period. Each house that's retrofitted is fifty to sixty thousand to to get to do a deep retrofit. There's renewable energy costs. You can you can quickly see how all the capital costs start to add up. What is interesting is when you try and map who's going to pay for those, whether they're financed or amortized over a lifetime of the investments. And all of that is really a policy decision or a strategy decision. So, for example, it might be possible to partner with financial institutions to finance the retrofits. Or maybe the retrofits happen through a utility. So there's, there's a lot of different ways to deploy or mobilize that capital. And and that is, I think, a space where there's a lot of creativity happening. So I we will be able to give you very detailed capital numbers, but on all of the actions to hit these targets. But but we're not quite there yet.
So challenging. Go ahead.
I I guess the other, one other point I want to add on the capital side is we just modeled for City of Toronto, which is two point nine million people. So a huge city in net zero by twenty forty target and then that's your by twenty fifty target. And interestingly, they both had the same net present value. And that was because the net zero forty target required them to take action more quickly, and therefore they collected the savings that resulted more quickly. So they needed more capital faster, but the there was no incremental cost to hitting that net zero forty target for the city.
And what was
Interesting to see that there's a lot of benefits to be gained of moving quickly.
And what was the investment that they were looking at?
For for Toronto, I can pull it up in one second here. It's it's certainly in the tens of billions. But that's, I mean, I mean, that's two point eight million people.
Understand, I understand. It's different scale. So how about
Just to clarify, the financials, the level of financial we do look at, like, I believe you will allude it to is we look at the overall cost to make the transition. So that isn't a cost in particular to the city. That's a cost for across different, different actors that would that would be taking part in that transition.
So just to summarize, the model assumes that every vehicle that we driving in Ames will be electric within less than ten years. Is that correct?
No. So that, so in our business, as as usual, our business is planned, we looked at fifty percent by twenty thirty of new sales. Typically, what we look at, because we have stock and flow model and we look at it's how the the federal target is later, too, is we look at new purchases. So as vehicles retire more and more, a larger percentage over time being replaced with electric vehicles. When you do look at a very aggressive target, like let's say the carbon neutral by twenty thirty, that's when you do need to start looking at retiring vehicles early. And so that has, that has a whole bunch of cost ramifications associated with it. And of course, a whole lot of other, a whole lot of other questions about, you know, whether that's, that's you know, the right thing to do is to retire early to get those emission savings. Yeah.
So how about the extensive behavior change required? Do you have that as a challenge? That's actually listed, I think, on a lot of the ones. What what does that mean?
Well, I think, look, it's a it's a transformative shift, right? I mean, you're going to have people, I think, regardless, that want to do more faster. You're going to have people that resist change. And it's and it's not just people, it's not just individuals, it's you know, other entities within the community, right? I'll need to change their their behavior in order for this to to really work for the for the goal to be achieved. And that's that's true across any of them. And so you know, some of that has to do with people changing their lifestyles and some of that just has to do with people's perception. For example, we're working with a community right now with a long-held perception that heat pumps won't work for their particular community. You know, the science and the research tells us it does, but it's just, you know, it's a belief that's held that because of the particularities of of their climate and their situation that that it's not a viable technology there, which probably was true when heat pumps first came out. So it's all kinds of these just little education and and psychological shifts that need to to happen for people to accept change, just like, just like when any change happens, right? Our 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 instant reaction is to resist it.
So I'd I'd like to play on that. I I think this is respectfully more than just putting on a another set of glasses to look at the situation. These are tremendous costs. Could you speak to the issue? This is what the mayor was talking about, I think, a little bit. How how do we think about enforcement? So we put a plan in place that requires significant reduction. How how do we go about getting our private sectors, people, our businesses and industries to come on board with this?
Yeah, that's really, that's really great. A really great question. So thank you for asking that. There's, I mean, there's a few components to that, that I think communities and councils need to recognize in putting these plans together. You know, you don't have control over every aspect of what happens in your community. And there's, there's areas where the city certainly has more agency or more levers than in others. And I would say, you know, typically, we would see industry being one where there may be less levers, right? Or for existing industry, there may be less levers. That doesn't mean that there is the ability to influence. So I would say two things about that. First, some of those, the private sector, you know, at one point, people talked a lot about business not wanting to do anything. I would say now businesses is at the forefront of this change and and that they have different levers. So they have consumer demand and they also have federal regulation coming down on them for a lot of industries that is going to shape their decision-making moving forward. From the city perspective, and of course, it's it's unique in different jurisdictions, but it's finding the right mixture of carrot and stick for all of those, all of those different different sectors and understanding where to intervene, how to intervene, when and when not to, right? So things that have been effective in in some communities aren't going to be effective in other communities. And that's really where the the localization of the plan comes in. You know, we could probably stand here tonight and tell you, okay, you need to, you know, if you're, if you're going to choose a target here, there are the big building blocks that need to happen. But that doesn't, that doesn't really help you understand the how. And so that's what we'll we'll start working towards. Get to the light stages of the project and that that the city will need to carry on. Just to provide an example, I guess, speaking with colleagues about this earlier today, I'm not sure if it's if it's called the same thing in in the United States, so I'll I'll explain it. We talk a little, a lot about property assessed clean energy. And so the idea behind behind that PACE programming is that the often the municipality or or some sort of organization will act as a loan guarantor for for residents to to make energy efficiency upgrades in their homes. Maybe it's putting in a heat pump, maybe it's adding insulation in the attic, maybe it's replacing windows and doors, maybe it's adding solder off roof. And sort of the benefit to that program is is that typically it can be paid back over time for low interest loan back through property taxes. And also the the payment stays at the home. So if somebody decides to sell their home, stays at the home and the new owner buys it knowing that property taxes are higher, but they get these benefits of lower energy costs. Anyway, aside from that summary, what we discussed is, you know, that's worked really well in some communities and and it hasn't in in other communities. And when you start to dig into it, it's, you know, it really comes down to education, promotion, getting the incentives right, understanding what people are willing to do and and not willing or wanting to do at that time. It comes to, you know, trust of the source. Do people trust their government as as being their local guarantor to to be working with the government in that capacity or or do they not? So there's all these different localized factors, right, that need to be considered.
So I'm I'm going to take from that answer that there are a variety of carrots and sticks. And we'll sort of have to figure out a combination of those to achieve those goals. The the biggest challenge I have with this material is trying to think about cost benefit. And so city councils, we regularly have to do a cost benefit analysis. So we see the benefits of X and we have to weigh it against the cost Y. And so you've presented the the benefits in terms of hitting our target goals for carbon reduction. But the there's very little in the way of understanding the costs of this. So aside from the issue of how we allocate that, but just the price tag on this, is it possible now, given, you know, we're not starting from scratch in terms of developing these climate action plans, has there been any work in modeling so that there are some rules of thumb that says that a city of X number of thousands, if it's going to hit a certain target on carbon reduction, should expect a corresponding cost to do that? Is there anything like that out there?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead, you'll.
So we we've, I think, done this kind of analysis for fifty or sixty municipalities of all sizes. And I don't think there's any clear pattern, I mean, in part because of the variation in energy costs, which are really different regionally. And capital costs can be fairly consistent, but then you get different types of housing stock to different types of building stock, which makes it very, and then you get different patterns of vehicle usage, which makes it very. So it it seems to be quite different. And some communities, if they have cheaper electricity, the payback is is much clearer, whereas other communities, if they have cheaper, relatively cheaper natural gas, the payback is is not as clear. So it's, it's a hard, it's a hard number to pin down without actually doing the detailed analysis.
So so but I I hope you appreciate the challenge that we have in thinking through this. Because either the city is going to increase taxes to have to pay for at least some of this, right? I mean, none of us should be under the illusion that any of these proposals aren't going to come along with some significant increases in revenue. Or we're going to require our residents to bring their properties up to a certain standard. And so in essence, we're going to pass those expenses on to them. So either way, the cost of living in Ames is going to change. We we shouldn't be naive about this. We can't have our cake, right? And so this is all very difficult for us because we're, we're walking through a store and there's no price tag listed on anything.
Well, and I would add that's
Yeah. And I think maybe just to follow up on that one, that was actually why we brought the fourth option, which hasn't yet been shared with you, but it's basically to build on which hasn't yet been shared with you, but it's basically to build all of this up from the ground for Ames and see what the results look like and then set the target after we do that. Because some of these values are ready to go where like, we know we want to have this target. We're, we're going forward. We're going to make sure our work aligns with it. This is our ambition, full speed ahead. Other municipalities want to understand all the implications. And so that really is the essence of, of what is the fourth option here, which we call the evidence-based target. And that's really building a scenario up from the ground up, evaluating its costs and then figuring out what target that aligns with once that's complete.
Anything else, Tim?
That, that's hopefully given you that, that option.
Well, yeah, and, and so there are six of us here. And so there are votes to pass something without having a sense of the price tag. But I, I hope that we won't deviate from our normal approach of, of trying to weigh the pros and cons of things and, and just adopt something that's politically expedient, but doesn't take anything into the, 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 the cost of this. And I just want to put a placeholder out there. We touched briefly on the source of electricity. And I don't know that tonight's the right forum for this, but I, I certainly would like to invite, Don into a more robust conversation. I, I do think that he offers some expertise in terms of the source of energy. I'm not an expert on this. It seems difficult to imagine that we can do this on a national level without a substantial increase in nuclear. The, the wind and if we're going to seriously go away from natural gas and coal and any kind of fossil fuel, it's hard for me to imagine that nuclear is not going to be a part of this. So at some point, I think that needs to be a part of the conversation. But those are my questions for tonight.
Rowan.
Well, I was just going to add that I think, you know, it's an interesting point, Tim, but there's also, I think, a cost to inactivity. So you say that, um, you know, this is going to cost us, cost our citizens in order to make these changes. It will cost no matter what. If we don't act and if the climate continues to warm, um, that's going to cost a lot too. So we'd have to measure those costs as well.
That's, that's fair.
Of inactivity.
I, I think that's fair and that, that's the challenge that we're in, right? So this is different than any other decision that we've ever made. So, um, but I just don't want to, I don't want to forfeit the, the good decision-making practices our city has, has followed through the years.
Okay, let's move on.
Great. I think, yeah, those are, um, very, you know, that's, that's a valid, valid concern, I think. And, and I think, yeah, we do look at, at cost of inaction. And so just as a rough figure, we know that every, every, usually every dollar spent on mitigation saves three to $5 down the line in adaptation. So that's, that's a number that's floating out there. That's different, of course. That's a, a number that's used nationally. So that's different for every community. Another thing that I just, I just want to flag, and this is not the only consideration, is that, when we're looking at, you know, all of this federal budgeting happening and all of, um, all of, uh, kind of, you know, honestly, it's a, quite a chaotic space right now with funding for different initiatives, right? Because, because all of this is happening so quickly, um, around the world and around the country. One of the considerations is, is making sure that, you know, those, those potential partners and funders understand, um, that, that you're being ambitious enough that they're willing to, to fund, right? So there is that consideration as well. And, and what that means and what that level of ambition is, is different for every, every funder. But just understand that there are external funders that do, um, that do, um, look at, at, um, you know, local governments' willingness to, to forge down this pathway.
Thank you.
Having a plan is really, really the first step there. So, so you're on the right path. I could, I could say that.
Thanks, Brittany. Can you, let's go ahead and move on to evidence-based tar-, uh, target, please?
Sure. So on to the evidence-based target. So we'll talk about this briefly. So unknown reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, um, by 2030. And that we would still look at, you know, uh, wanting to set the net zero emissions by 2050. It's built from the bottom up, um, with the consideration of local factors like you all mentioned. And so, um, you know, typically this comes from what we see a lot as we see cities acknowledge, cities that are choosing an evidence-based target, acknowledging that, you know, the current best practice is science-based. But they're, they're managing their local constraints, which we know all, all, obviously they're managing their constraints by considering kind of what's in their agency and in control. So, um, for an example, we just worked with a city that's, that's considering this target because they have an industry that's really managed at the federal level, um, and regulated with, at the federal level, operating within, within their city batteries. And so, um, you know, they don't have a lot of agency there to influence. So, um, uh, you know, so an evidence base is a consideration there because, because what do you, what do you do, right? And also, I'll get into the benefits here. So here's an example, um, you know, again, we would do the same, we would do the same wedge piece. And of course, we would look at the relative importance of different actions, the result they get from a GHG emissions perspective. Uh, we would still look at, you know, what is the life, carbon liability? What's left over the years ranging from, or we start to that 2050, uh, date. Sometimes there's a gap, uh, at 2050, uh, like I expressed, could be possible at any target. And often what we also see as well is, is, um, cities still kind of using that carbon budgeting tool just to compare where they're at and to understand and to use it as an adaptive management tool. Any of these plans will take adaptive management, of course. Things change, circumstances change, technologies change. But I think this one in particular, um, requires that, that focus on adaptive management. So some of the benefits, so it really provides you with the ability to focus on, on what, the places where you have agency, the places where you have controls, the places where you have levers to either, you know, use those carrots or sticks to incentivize or regulate sectors in your community to take the types of actions that, um, that you deem important to get to the goal. Rather than spending time and energy on the levers that, that can't be controlled. So another example of this that we sometimes see is we see a, maybe a really ambitious city with a, with a state government that is not as ambitious. And if utilities are, are managed at that level, that can be, it very difficult. Um, but of course there are still lever, levers with local generation, um, renewables, all of those sorts of things. But it's really, um, you know, put less energy into, into trying to convince, you know, those other entities to change and put more focus on what, what you can do as, as a community. Uh, one of the benefits here too, I think, is just that change may be, be more accepted because it is locally built. It really looks at the factors before setting the target. Although on the other side, you may have resistance from those folks that are looking for the more ambition or for the target to be set, um, and then to figure the, the actions afterwards. Uh, just like the others, it can avoid some of that infrastructure lock-in. It can still, uh, realize the cool benefits. One of the important cool benefits I haven't mentioned yet is just economic. And, um, one of the things here is that often these plans that we create, they spur local economic development through, you know, the retrofit industry and all these different pieces that need to come together to really make this happen. Challenges, it may not meet the threshold for the Paris Agreement, but it very well could. May not be science-aligned, again, um, if very well could. Depends on what is in and out at the end of the day. It's, and it says, I wrote here, it does not address global equity. It could, um, if, uh, if it was a very, if you built it from the ground up and that you could reach that target. Again, all of the transformational, um, bits are still in here that, that need to happen. And the one thing that I would, I guess I would caution about this one is in particular, and not that I, I think this of this council in particular, but again, looking at this as a long-term plan and a community-wide plan. You know, what you, what you want to ensure that you're not doing is creating a discourse of change being someone else's problem to say, you know, oh, that, you know, we face some barriers here. This is a challenge, uh, you know, let's talk about the barriers that are getting in our way or who's getting in our way rather than, than taking action. So, um, you know, we really want to build that in the, the plan in a way that it's positive and looking at the pieces that can be done rather than, uh, looking at external barriers and using those as, as evidence that, that a target can't be met. So I'll stop there and answer any questions, uh, on that. And then I'll, I can provide you with just a one slide summary here of what that.
Can you, um, explain, it says, uh, uses term infrastructure lock-in? That's used a number of times. I, I think I forgot to ask what that meant.
Yeah, so that's what I spoke about with the buildings, um, in particular, um, or any long-lasting assets. So the understanding that, um, and what you all spoke about with, you know, with that Toronto, um, target, realizing that, you know, they just, they got as good of payoff, um, by going with 2040 as what they would have for 2050. So, um, if we start back at the beginning, I guess here with the buildings example is that, if you're building something today, um, with, you know, let's say bare minimum code standards, that's a long-term asset that you're building. So you're looking at, you know, depending on the type of building, somewhere between 20 and 50 years before you're really looking at doing a deep retrofit upgrade or replacement of that building. And so you've made some choices that cost money as far as, you know, the energy system, the heating system, you know, the type of insulation and windows and all that that you're putting into the building. And so chances are too, you're not going to change those systems over until they're at end of life. So you're walking into those decisions, decisions essentially for, for a long-term period. And it come with quite a significant cost partway through to say, oh no, let's, let's go back and do, um, some efficiency measures. The sooner that we, you know, push towards getting above that minimum code and strive towards more energy efficient buildings, um, it's a higher upfront capital cost. We know that, um, but you get those savings back over time as the building operates, let's say, our market. So that's what you're, you're avoiding, I guess, is the ongoing operational cost.
Okay, and if you wouldn't mind, would you go back to the business as usual just for a second? I just had a quick question on the, the total greenhouse gas admission by sectors, like the second or third slide in.
Sorry, I didn't catch all of that. I heard, go back to the business as usual.
Uh, just, yeah, it'd be, uh, the total greenhouse gas emissions by sector chart. There you go. So if I'm understanding correctly, if the goal by 2050 is to have zero greenhouse gas emissions, you essentially are drawing a line from the Y-axis at 1,200 and going all the way down to the bottom corner. And there's basically, you're hitting zero down there. Is that correct?
Yes.
So then how does that equate to two slides later, total energy use by sector? So that means a huge decrease in energy use. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. So what we typically look at is, um, improving, um, improving and switching, reducing, improving and switching. So what we would want to see is, you know, there does need to be some, some behavior change. So an example of that is, you know, through decisions around, let's say, we put it in a city context, active transportation, hopefully you can, in education, you can encourage people to, uh, walk for short trips instead of using their vehicles. So that's one way that, that's a behavior change. So that's a reduction, overall reduction. We can make improvements, um, things like energy efficiency. So again, we would be decreasing the amount of energy there. And those are through, you know, structural changes, like I said, adding insulation, changing your windows and doors. Um, that also has, has a different benefit of, um, augmenting energy demand as, as we switch over to, if you were to switch over to electricity. Um, and then there's the, you know, there's the adding renewables component. So we don't expect that energy use is going to hit, you know, anywhere near the levels that the emissions reduction is going to hit. There's still going to be energy use. I think you will mention that you could actually see an increase in energy use. It's just using cleaner sources. Vehicles are another great example. So, um, the, we know that the grid in our business, as usual, our business is planned scenario. Actually, it shows the grid being quite similar, um, as it is when, at the beginning of the scenario. And so, um, but you still see this drop in, um, in energy use partway through the graph and also recognizing that the population in Ames is growing over this time. So in theory, there's more, there's more vehicles on the road. You see that drop because with, um, the increase in electric vehicles, you're using a more efficient, uh, asset. And so you can technically drive the more and use the same amount of energy or you can drive the same amount and use less energy.
So in that chart right there, is municipal what the city facilities represents? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
And transportation would be essentially personal transportation. I would presume, is there some, some city vehicles in that? Or does a municipal actually include the city vehicles?
The city vehicles would be in transportation in this graph.
Okay, okay. So, so if we're going to go ahead and we hear the word electricity used a lot, it seems that in order to get this, to this, where you want to go, everything has to go electric. Vehicles, um, heating, cooling processes, the whole nine yards. So for, just for the cities, for example, for city, what size electric plant would have to be provided to convert everything to electric? Cause every vehicle is going to have to be charged at home or some charging. I'm just trying to get an idea of the magnitude of electrical generation necessary, just for Ames alone.
Yeah. That's a, that's a great question. And I think so, so what I will say, you know, particularly with electric vehicles, while we model those, you know, they're the most, we know, um, right now for, for personal vehicles are the most, um, uh, commercially viable and kind of growing sector, um, there. But we know with things like heavy-duty trucks, we do typically model other, other pathways as well. So with heavy-duty, we do look at things like green hydrogen. Um, so we don't look just at electricity, uh, but it is certainly a very, um, typically it, it does tend to provide, um, the emissions reductions or allows the ability to get those emissions reductions that, uh, that often we find municipalities are looking for in the plan. Um, as far as the, the impact that that has, it depends, again, it's unique to every city. But when we look at, um, the actions, um, we would look at, at some of those efficiency actions ahead of or with, um, the switch over to electricity. So it really does augment the demand. So let's say you were going to increase, um, you know, you were going to put, uh, 50% more homes onto electricity from, from natural gas or something. That doesn't necessarily mean that you need to, to increase, um, uh, electricity production by that much, by that much if you're doing the efficiency actions at the same time or ahead. We just, uh, I was just working on a, a project today where, you know, there was some concern that, um, that the plan would, you know, triple or quadruple the need for electricity. Um, and when we looked at it, it was even with switching a lot of things over to electric, it was 1.3 times, um, what they had started with. And that was with a, with a growth rate of 30%.
But I guess I would add on that, Brittany, though, we aren't looking at hourly or peak.
Right, we're not. Yes, so we aren't looking at that.
There is, there is definitely, uh, a grid management component that is, is quite complicated that, I mean, I'm saying this very well aware that, that we aren't analyzing as, as part of this. But, but we do see, like you said, Brittany, consumption doesn't necessarily go away.
Thank, that, that was, that's, that's helpful. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I mean, to John's point, we could just turn off our natural gas. I mean, to John's point, we could just turn off our natural gas production today. We could just not use any more natural gas and say, we're going to buy all electricity off the grid. There isn't enough nat, green energy to buy. I mean, this is a point I want to come back to. How does your model take into account the availability in battery storage, for example? There isn't nearly the battery capacity to deal with wind and solar energy. How does that get factored into the model?
So the real, like, for sure, storage needs to be a part of it if you have intermittent sources of electricity. I think some some unique things that are opportunities that Ames has or the main one, I guess, I'll talk about now is the Ames municipal electric system and having control over your own utility. I see that as being a key opportunity that we don't really see on on many projects. And we haven't gotten to the part of designing the different actions, but I'm I'm thinking that that's going to play a significant part of it and thinking about how to combine maybe more investments in solar and wind energy coupled with batteries and seeing what the impact of that is.
Yeah, but that doesn't, and and I would just add to that, you know, this isn't predetermined. There is, you know, electricity is one option that's very viable that that we always look at. That doesn't mean a 100% set in stone, change over to 100% electricity. That doesn't, that doesn't work for every community that we work with, certainly. And so we do look at other other options.
So I have a question. I don't know whether it's for you, Brittany, or for Eul. But going back to the the evidence-based target and the statement that it does not address global equity. I'm wondering to what extent other cities are prioritizing global equity over local equity and how we enter that discussion? Because it seems to me those two things can be very much at odds with each other. And we obviously have a responsibility to our residents as we also have a responsibility to the global community.
Mm-hmm.
So
That's a great.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering whether there's any background from other cities' interactions on how they choose what to prioritize, global or local?
You mean that they're at odds with each other because of the capital requirements and and people locally might not be able to afford what's necessary to do what would be equitable globally, but?
Possibly, possibly. I mean, that's that's certainly the most obvious way. But I don't know what other ways it it might be at odds. That was the one that that came to mind most readily.
Yeah, I think I think raising the capital to, I think most projects show that there is a good financial case for most of the interventions that decarbonize a community in most cases now. I think that's very general across most of the projects we're working on. But being able to raise the money to make it happen in a way that is equitable is a significant challenge. There's one city in the UK, Bristol, which basically just went out with an RFP and said, here's a billion dollars worth of projects. We're looking for an organization that can just basically decarbonize our whole community and we're going to give you a billion dollar contract to do it. Here's payback and everything else. And they have three, three large companies who came forward with bids, but I think they're getting a lot of backlash within the community because of who's going to benefit from that investment and who isn't going to benefit. And it really, it's it's really an equity question that is this sort of gumming up that whole process. So that that is a significant challenge, how you actually raise enough capital in a way that will benefit everyone.
Yeah, I guess what I would add to that is it's, you know, with all of these, with all of these targets, regardless of what's chosen, you know, local equity in particular, there's there's some ways that, I guess, we would want to see local, we look at the co-benefits and so we'd want to see economic developments. That's one, one maybe piece of the equity component. We would want to see, you know, actions and we would see actions in most cases that would reduce things like air pollution. And so that takes that some surface equity concerns, but really it's about engaging the community and understanding who's in your community and what their challenges and barriers are. We will dig into that work a little bit later on in the project when we start building the low-carbon scenario. And what you'll see is, is, you know, we'll go out to the public and say, you know, these are the things we're considering. Or these are kind of, these are the things that that need to get done to get where where we're going. You know, what are the balance, the challenges and barriers? So we do certainly look at that and then but that doesn't, like you mentioned, it doesn't necessarily address the global concern if that target isn't, isn't, I guess, happening quick enough or isn't aggressive enough. And so that is kind of a challenge of of balance that that I think every community struggles with or has to address in some way.
And do you see any pattern for how they are coming down on that? Are they on the side of the local or on the side of the global? Or is there no pattern and I'm asking a question that you can't answer?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure that there's, I would say there's a pattern. I can give, and I actually have a slide here left about about what other communities are doing. Yeah, I'm not sure of that. It's it's necessarily one or the other all the time is what I would say. If a plan is localized and done done in a way that addresses community concerns and it can still stretch towards beating the global target, obviously there's no conflict. That's not, that's not true in in every community. But, but yeah, I don't know that there's a clear, clear pattern of choosing, choosing one side or the other.
When you go to the community, you said you were going to present different options. That also include what the relative cost is going to be, the impact is going to be to them individually? Is it more or less just a philosophical question?
Typically, when we go to the community, so I'm speaking about the low-carbon action piece. So that's typically done before costing, when the city is looking at some of the pathways that it may need to achieve. And so that part helps, helps inform the city for policy programs and also that finance piece about what are the challenges to community members to to participating in some of those actions? So we will very directly ask the questions are, you know, do they need to understand more? Is there a financial barrier that would, that they feel would keep them from participating in a particular action? So we are very direct in in attempting to get that feedback from the community.
So because as you can appreciate, you could, someone could say philosophically, you're there for trying to reduce their carbon footprint, but they all of a sudden realize this is going to cost $50,000 to upgrade their house in order to be part and parcel of that. You may get a different answer.
Yeah, yeah. And we're specific about the actions that we're asking them. So we don't, we don't have an overall community cost at the time, but we're more focused on the individuals. So, you know, most people, I think, should be able to to give us a sense of whether, you know, adding a heat pump to their home is within their the range of their financial ability or or not.
If I could follow up on that, that sounds like we're talking about part of the process that'll happen further down the line. I want to be very specific about the target setting because you're going to go back out to the community and there's going to be some more meetings. You're going to come back to us and ask us to set a target. So is there going to be any more cost style information associated with those targets as part of those process? As part of that process or not?
No, we we do not do the costing at this stage in the in the process. We we can't without knowing we've ever had it.
Interesting.
So I, I come back to my point, my concern. Are we still on board with this?
How about this? Is it wholly impractical to generate any of that information? I thought I heard you'll say, I thought you said that you were sort of crunching some numbers about capital costs. Is it possible to get some partial information along these lines? Or another hazard possibly is that that partial information might be kind of so so unreliable that it would not really help and might mislead us?
All right, you will address the piece about, you know, general capital costs. As far as developing the specific cost for Ames, it very much goes outside of the scope of what we're, we've been tasked with doing. So providing, so in order for us to do the financials, we would have to know all the actions that would go into it. So we would essentially have to develop four low-carbon scenarios based on each one of these targets and to understand from the city and community what should go into those. So that's going through that engagement process times four to be able to build those scenarios and then go through the financial modeling process. So so that's the only way for us to give a localized cost for each of these.
Well, I think you can appreciate the fact that there's one way you can approach it and to say, well, you're going to do target A, for example, whatever that is, and all of a sudden come back and realize, oh, my gosh, the community's not going to support that. I mean, we we want a plan, I think this council, they wants a plan that we can action, I mean, make it actionable, you know, and move forward. But it's also got to be balanced with, you know, other factors. And so that's, that actually goes back to the question that was posed at our first steering committee meeting was how are costs going to be informed? Now, I really appreciate, I appreciate Eul, she's just kind of shooting from his hip. I get that. So, but I just did some quick calculations. We have 8,000 single-family homes in Ames. And if you said $50,000 a home to retrofit them, that's what's his number, that's the loan numbers. That's $400 million just for single-family homes to retrofit. And so, I mean, I'm just, that's why I'm just trying to get an idea for our community, get an idea of what kind of decisions we're going through. Because I think it has profound impact on either our own city budget, taxes or whatever. So if that's too high, then, you know, we can don't go back. Maybe it's supposed to be 25,000. But the point is, is that that's just one piece without going to our power plant, without going to industry and commercial. And I just think that we can wish that everyone have electric cars in 10 years. But there's a lot of cars in the road that are 15 years old, you know, because people can't afford to, you know, upgrade cars. I'm just trying to be realistic so that a plan is developed that we can with confidence go into a capital improvement plan, you know, and move this, move this forward with confidence that we're going to be able to have, you know, accomplish this, but.
Yeah, I just to to respond to that, that's, that's a very useful calculation and it really gives you a sense of the magnitude of the effort and capital that that can be required. And I think one approach that could bridge these worlds is really the evidence-based approach where we basically build a scenario and then iterate on it. And we can start with fairly ambitious actions, like say retrofitting 75% of the building stock or 100% of the building stock by 2030. So you spread that 400 million out over, or 300 million or however much it is, out over 20 years or 30 years. And then you can adjust based on the results. And then that can, you could adjust both to increase the ambition to hit one of the science-based targets or you could adjust to reduce the capital costs at a particular time. So it would kind of give, give a starting point and then allow adjustment to happen in the future. That's, that could be one, one way to sort of bridge the uncertainty of these targets and their costs and also allow us to to explore our future without. I mean, the real power of the scenario is that you can explore the future and you don't have to spend any of that money. You can start to see what happens when we we build out this future. So the scenarios are really designed to to be empowering in this way and and not disempowering. But I think the realism that you're you're looking at this with is also really important because a lot of municipalities are not being, I mean, they're jumping into it full with their full heart, but not in a really practical, realistic sense, which is really the tone that that this discussion is bringing, bringing forward. So I think that's also really, really healthy.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ian.
Can can we look at the targets compared slide again, please? So just to, I I know we can't, the plan isn't to generate any sort of precise cost figures. I understand the burden involved in that. They're just, there are a huge number of variables here. But would it be wrong for us to look at this graph and look at the space between those, those lines and sort of understand that white space between them to be sort of, you know, the amount of carbon that's different between these plans? And to say that, well, that's total carbon emitted over this timeframe, right? And and to say that, well, the cost is going to be somewhat in sync with, you know, what the line says. Is that reasonable or is even that kind of thinking about costs unreliable?
Well, the only difference is
Reliable because you're actually also getting streams of revenues. So you're going to get revenues from any renewables that you put in place. You're going to get avoided costs from any retrofits that you do and also from transition to electric vehicles because they're much cheaper to operate than internal combustion engines. So there's a lot of dynamics at play within costs that make it really hard to make quick assessments.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
And also there, they have a footnote, says that evidence base is not shown because of the model too. So we have no idea. Yeah. Okay, Brittany, you want to go ahead and finish up?
Sure, I'll sum this up. So these are the targets compared. So this just gives you the visual of what all those look like together. Your business as usual on the top, your science-based target, the general one, being the least aggressive here, the federally aligned target being very similar to that. Your science base dropping quite a fair bit from those. They all end in the same endpoint though, at a net zero by 2050. And then, of course, evidence base is not modeled in this graph because that would be built from the ground up. So we would have to understand the actions and implications before we can build that. What I just wanted to provide you is especially since we've alluded to it a little bit here tonight is is some of the goals that are around you. So these are net zero by 2050 goals. So these are communities around you. And like I said, or like we've discussed through this, not all, not all situations are the same. So the pathways that that different communities have chosen to get to net zero by 2050 are are different. So Des Moines just, I believe they updated, I believe they did have 2050 as their net zero goal. They've just updated to 2035. Iowa City has not quite a net zero by 2050 goal. They they're looking at approaching net zero by 2050. And so I haven't looked into that in great detail, but that probably looks at that kind of liability gap that I've I've talked about that sometimes there is at the end where we hope technology or innovation will fill overtime. They did just meet their interim goal, their 2030 goal early though. And then you see these other lists of nearby areas that have chosen net zero by 2050 goals. And then most of them do have an interim 2030 goal, which really dictates their pathway to get there. The only other outlier here is Lawrence, Kansas, which has a 100% renewable goal by 2050, which is, which is a bit of a nuance.
Brittany, both Des Moines and Iowa City, I believe, are primarily mid-American energy. And they are getting close to being, you know, wind-powered. So what, I mean, what role does that play? It would seem to be an awful big role in playing in terms of them hitting their goals. They're not paying for the money. They're not paying for that investment. The federal government, you know, helped significantly in terms of, you know, the credits and tax credits and stuff. So is that factored into Iowa City getting their goal done quicker? Because I did notice too, I did a little searching this afternoon and saw that they were aggressively getting done quicker. But I think it's a lot because of Mid-America. Is that accurate or?
Great question. I, you know, I can't, I can't speak to that specifically, not having detailed knowledge of what what was in their plan or or all the individual actions they've taken over the last few years. What I can say is, you know, those certain, those external actors do certainly play a role. What's happening at the utility level, where you're, where you're situated, what's happening at the state level, all of those things. They do certainly play a role. Emissions calculations are a really, really interesting thing, I think, just in general. really interesting thing. I think just in general, local governments take them on and there is a global protocol for reporting and what you report on. So you do report on and kind of not take responsibility for, but in a, in a way you are for, for, you're taking responsibility for the emissions in your community and trying to augment those. That being said, you don't, don't control all the factors like where your, like where your, your electricity is coming from and what that grid looks like. Ames is in a unique position where you do have some control because some of the, some of the electricity is coming from your own utility. But certainly there are external factors there that can make it easier or more difficult. The other piece that I would say just on the, the not paying for a part, I, I would really hope, you know, and we can't say this with any assurance at this point, that there would be funding opportunities, you know, in Ames, for four Ames that would offset or augment some of those upfront capital costs. And I really am interested what, what comes even of this, of this federal infrastructure money and how that gets kind of trickled down and allocated with some of the goals that are in place that are meant to like impact electricity systems and, and things like that. What sort of impact and what sort of cost implications that, that has or, or taking cost implications away from local governance?
Thank you. Any final questions for Brittany, Eric, or you?
Final questions. I have one final question. Um, I, I mentioned this before, but I, I think you've probably also heard a lot of the community input from people who are specifically asking for a 2030 net zero target. And I'm not trying to say that this is like what I'm asking for right now. I'm just trying to gather information here. The, so my question is, in responding to, to that preference and, and those questions, how did that affect the targets that you're bringing to us now, these four targets, if it did?
Yeah. So we, we did not receive, I would say, a significant enough portion of, of people asking for that target that, that we included in here. It worked out to be, you know, like a dozen people. And I think what we've done, what we have done moving forward for this target setting outreach that will do to the community is we've provided some information about the four targets, but then we've also provided people to, to ask which they prefer. And we've also provided with them with the selection to say, we think they're all too aggressive or not aggressive enough. So hopefully we will receive that feedback and, and hopefully I'm hoping for wide, more widespread feedback so that we can, we can understand the, the desires in the community beyond, beyond a handful of people. Of course, that doesn't make, you know, who we heard from irrelevant, not at all. But what we don't know is how many, how many people feel that same way or feel differently.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I think it's been a great workshop and I appreciate your answers and to our grilling. And I think you can, I think you accurately sensed that this council's really passionate about proceeding and doing, uh, doing the, the proper work. And I think, but it's got to be balanced with a lot of other aspects of it too. So with that said, I don't see anyone else indicating any further questions. So I think we'll let you sign off. We have one more small item of business to take care of tonight that we're going to adjourn to.
Thank you so much for having us. And thank you for the great discussions and, and questions.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Too late. All right. Move on to disposition of communications to council. We have two items. One is an email from Cameron Gray, local artist regarding community-free library, call them pylons within city parks. Is there any interest to refer that to Parks and Rec or not? For memo?
Yeah, I would move that we refer that to, I don't, I don't know. Would it be staff or would it be Parks and Rec? Or Steve, you decide who's the?
Yeah, just, just the staff.
Okay. So I, I would.
It's, it's between public, maybe public art and Parks and Rec, the library.
Good clarification. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Then I would move that we refer that to staff for a memo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to second. Host in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And the second one is a letter from Ames Main Street regarding, they sent a letter, council that you've received, and they were asking about having about a 10, 15 minute slideshow, just to kind of give you an update on the downtown area. Steve, Goodhue, the president, kind of gave a little bit of a snapshot of what we'd be covering. Is there an interest in putting that on the agenda? Or is the letter adequate?
I'd be interested in having it on the agenda simply because I think it's good to have them in front of us. So I would move that we put it on the agenda.
Thank you. Second?
Which agenda are you referring to?
The November 23rd.
Which is?
Meeting.
Next Tuesday. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little uncertain about this one. Part of it is I think that embedded in the letter is they expressed interest in what sounds like budget matters to me. And I, I really think that we, we need to treat outside groups kind of the same with respect to the budget. We have a process. We expect written requests so that we can evaluate them all at the same time. So I'm not, not nuts about, about inviting someone specifically to, to get extra time with council to, to make a pitch. Other than that also, I'm, I'm just concerned that the, the rest of the request is kind of vague. It's, that doesn't really set out the scope of any particular deliberation that we'll do. You know, even when the city department comes to us, they say, here is the issue. We want you to decide this issue for us. And I don't feel like we even know that from this letter. That all said, I like Ames Main Street. They do great work, you know. So I'm a little torn on this one.
I assume that we received it because we are one of their funders and we don't get reports from them on what they're doing regularly. And so I would be perfectly happy if staff said to them, we don't want to hear about budget issues, but we would like you to give us the update. It fits in with our, I think we have a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. And so it fits well with what's happening at that meeting already. But I would be perfectly fine with staff saying, we don't want to know about the budget issues. We just want an update on what's happening with Ames Main Street.
I think the other two is there also, I did meet with them, their board here a while back and just challenged them, saying, what's the vision for downtown? You know, and the point is, is that council wants to support downtown, has supported downtown. But sometimes when the board changes, then the requests or the direction kind of changes. And so that would be helpful, you know, for them to kind of come back and say, here's kind of where we're going if the board's going to adopt. And they're, they're not coming back with a plan. It's just kind of an update. And also they have identified some, you know, some needs. So your, your point is well taken. And they have part of it in the letter says that there's some identified, you know, needs that they are asking for potentially some help. So I'm not going to say it wouldn't have some parts of the budget asked, but also I think it's part of talking about what they're trying to do. And they're trying to be proactive in terms of, you know, moving forward with the downtown, I mean, at least giving a vision, some planning and vision and long-term vision. So that, for example, one example is we have those eight lighting pylons that are, you know, brick with a granite top. And then they have like the, I think it's scrap, not scrap now, but it's a metal shroud that came from the John Deere, you know, works that was done with the light column. Anyway, those are, those are deteriorating. There's a lot of bricks falling and cracking and, and the lenses are decaying. So do you replace those or do you rebuild them? How's that all fit in? And so the point, I think they're trying to take a holistic, you know, view, you know, of that. So, but I think if you wanted to clarify that this is not a budget presentation, but more as a vision, what they're, what they're working on, then maybe they could, staff could give a little better idea of what, or some direction on how they'll present it.
Thanks for talking through that with me.
Sure. All right. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, council comments. Trevor?
Yes. So I started sending out emails and stuff about the joint city meeting ideas. So hoping to get those started and move forward. And then I'll bring updates when I have them. And then student government is looking at giving me a committee. So just to put more time and energy into the work we do here. And so, yeah, I'll have more. That was just mentioned last week. So I don't have a lot to say about that, but I will when I know more.
Thanks, Trevor. Robin?
Nothing for me tonight.
David?
Not tonight, thanks. Amber?
Nope, nothing. Nothing tonight, thanks.
Yeah.
So I want to just say thank you to the people that have worked hard on our climate action plan up to this point. I hope that the, the kinds of questions I posed tonight aren't construed, that I somehow am not vested in this. We have had unanimous votes on our climate matters on every single vote when I've been on council. And I'm very proud of that. And, and so we really have to, to ask hard questions. We don't have the luxury of taking these things sort of at face value. And it's part of why you elected us. And I, I hope that we can continue in this and learn a lot. These obviously are very bright people that have great experience. And I am, I have no doubt, we're going to benefit from this journey. I don't know what the outcome's going to be. But for you folks that are sitting here, thank you for the work that you put into this. And I'm looking forward to the rest of the process. And that was a very robust and thoughtful conversation tonight. Thanks.
Gloria?
This week is the National League of Cities conference, and I think some of us are participating in that at a distance. And so I'm hoping that we will have some good ideas to bring back for council. And I think that's all I've got for tonight.
All right. Well, Trevor, I'm not sure if you can be around. We wish you a happy Thanksgiving. Students are taking off next week. I hope they have a safe and happy holiday. And just want to thank you. I mean, honestly, you've been very proactive with us. I appreciate the email. You followed up. It's the first time I ever had an email from our ex officio saying, okay, here's the thing we talked about. What are we going to do? So I appreciate that very much. And so that's a great partnership with student government. So thank, tell your leadership, thank you also. Doing a great job. All right. With that, entertaining motion to adjourn.
Will we adjourn?
We are adjourned. Thank you.